Can you all hear me? Wait, can you all hear me? Hello? Sorry, I'm a goofball. This is what the night's gonna be like. If you all in the back can make your way to a chair, I think we put out enough. And please enjoy my illusion of a podium. My name is Jane Stromberg. For those of you who do not know me. Thank you. Yeah, why not? I use she/her pronouns. And I am your current co-chair for the Burlington City Progressive Party. I'm here with my friend Adam Franz, who... Oh, right there? Yes. Please, yeah. Thank you. We are going to keep it cruising through the evening. We have lots to cover. We have awesome, awesome guest speakers. We have incredible candidates that are... We are privileged to have so many people stepping up to run for office, especially right now. So I'm feeling very grateful. But before we get into literally anything, I do want people to just kind of... Like, we... I'm not gonna lead a meditation, I promise. I just wanna recognize the moment that we are experiencing, like, as a people. Like, progressive party aside, as human beings, we are experiencing a really wild year. Politically, it's not an easy time to be involved in organizing a movement building. So just as human beings in this space, thank you Old North and Community Center. Honestly, yeah. It's a privilege to be able to feel safe enough to come together and be able to talk about our movement and building a sustainable and equitable future for generations to come and for our communities. So I'm feeling very grateful. And I just wanna take a second, you know, regardless if you know the person next to you or if that person's a new face, please introduce yourself or just say like hello as a human being. Please introduce yourself to your people. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me. I appreciate the indulging. Oh my gosh, now that's got you going. I'm sorry. That's very adorable, though. Thank you. So we're gonna now shift into some procedures and rules. I'm gonna have our great friend Erhard come up here. Where are you, Erhard? Oh, Erhard, you're in front of me. Oh my God, what a treat. So Erhard's gonna finish chewing. And then he's gonna come up and go through some procedural things so we know what to expect as we go through our nominating caucus. Yes, you are at a caucus, but we're also... We're pretty chill. We're gonna keep it very humanized here and not too overly formal.
I was just gonna say, so you're starting with the most formal part. Well, what are the most formal parts? For folks who wanna follow along, there is a piece of paper. It was on the registration desk when you came in. I don't know if we have copies still that can go around. We can hand them out later, just as a... I don't know, just as a reference. So just a couple of basic rules. We have some eligibility requirements that we want folks to consider when they are endorsing a candidate. And this comes straight from our party bylaws. So I'll just put those out first and foremost. We wanna consider the candidate's affirmative endorsement of the Vermont Progressive Party's stated principles, which should be right on the back of the sheet that has the caucus rules and procedures. We also wanna consider the candidate's commitment not to work in opposition to any provision in the Progressive Party platform, which we don't have tonight. It's pretty long, but we do have the principles. Also, I wanna consider the candidate's commitment to reject all corporate campaign contributions. Candidate's commitment not to work against Progressive Party endorsed or nominated candidates. And we wanna consider the candidate's commitment to caucus regularly with other Progressive elected officials. Eligibility requirements for voting in this caucus. You must be an eligible voter in Burlington. And if you're not registered yet to vote in town, you can do so at the desk at the front with Adam. You... If you're a Progressive Party member, we certainly hope that you support the Progressive Party platform and stated principles, that you consider yourself a member of the party, and that you don't currently serve on a Democratic or Republican Party city committee. And we also, to be eligible, you must not vote in the Democratic Republican Party endorsement caucus during this electoral cycle. And if you're here and you're not registered and you don't consider yourself a progressive necessarily, you're welcome to attend. Anyone's welcome to attend a caucus. You just may not vote, given those guidelines. The procedure is basically gonna be, we're gonna go through the wards, one by one, one through eight. We don't have candidates in all of the wards. But we'll start with Ward One. We'll have two-minute endorsement speeches from a nominating speeches from the designated nominator for the candidate. And then each candidate will have a maximum of five minutes to talk a little bit about themselves, let us know who you are and what you wanna do if elected and why you wanna get elected. Lastly, nominations can be accepted from the floor. If anyone wants to self-nominate or nominate someone else that we don't know has already declared. And then we're gonna repeat that process through the wards. So we do have candidates, as I understand it, in Ward One, in Ward Two, in Ward Three, and in Ward Eight. So we'll have to skip the wards in between 'cause I don't think we have candidates in them. But we probably wanna stop during those wards just to make sure that we don't have somebody who's like self-nominating from the floor. And then at the end, we're hoping for 10 to 15 minutes of Q and A from the floor for the candidates. So I think the only other thing to, I guess, announce is voting will be by electronic ballot. We use this system called OPA Vote, which many of you will probably be familiar with. And you can reg... If you haven't registered for the caucus either at the table or electronically previously, you have until tonight to register. And then you will receive an OPA Vote ballot. In the next couple of days, electronic voting closes at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, December 12th. And if you, for some reason, you can't vote electronically, if you don't have internet access, you have perhaps a disability that prevents you from voting internet... By internet, we also have paper ballots in the back. But we absolutely prefer that people vote electronically by OPA Vote. That's it for all the procedural stuff.
Thanks, Erhard. And so up next, we have a special guest, our fearless leader in the city of Burlington, Mayor Emma Mulvaney-Sanit. Would you wanna come up and give a few words?
Going back to like my little soul band days with this thing. All right. All right. Hello, progressives. What a treat. What a treat to be able to address all of you after another long day of being mayor of this beautiful city of ours. So I just wanna, first of all, appreciate everyone who turned out. For the folks who are interested in running for city council, thank you. This is such a challenging time in our... In sort of our humanity, but especially in this country. And it's a time that we really need to have political courage, to have the fortitude and the clarity of our values and the clarity of the why, of why we need to make sure we maintain and protect our local democracy. And how important progressive leadership is, and particularly in this time. It's so necessary. It's so necessary to have progressive voices that are bold and courageous and strong. It's so necessary that we protect our vibrant little local democracy here in Burlington and not default into this complicity of... What you're seeing a lot of other parts of our country do under a Trump administration. People are backing away. They're changing language. They're scrubbing websites. It's really alarming time to see how other electeds are choosing to act and choosing to govern at that. But here in Burlington, with a progressive mayor and a strong progressive caucus of five mighty folks currently on the city council, we are doing our best to resist, to really truly resist, to protect our local democracy, but also protect the folks who've been marginalized by systems long before today. Systems of racism, systems of capitalism, systems that are simply failing working people. And more than that, we continually uplifting and amplifying the voices that have been really sidelined, that have been systemically sidelined by those political systems. And we're also trying to be strategic in these times because there is a smart way to go about forming a resistance. And there's a strategic way to lead a municipality, especially the largest city in Vermont. I wanna remind everyone, a million years ago, I was... Not remind you that I used to be the chair of the party, but I've been a long member of the Progressive Party here in Vermont. And it has a proud history for which we stand on many shoulders of folks who've come and gone. We have a lot of folks who've been in the struggle for a long time in this room. Former Lieutenant Governor David Suckerman, of course. We have elected State Representative Brian Sheena. He still serves for a long period of time and often as like the only or one of the onlies in a body that they are serving in that is not always super friendly to progressive voices, to the left, to the folks who wanna make sure that we have progressive values through and through. Because those are truly a commitment to economic justice, social justice, knowing what that actually means, showing up for affordability, which is such a performative and weaponized concept on the federal level. Yet consistently progressives show up for those issues. We consistently show up for democracy, equity, protecting elections, making it more democratic, like instant runoff voting, for example, rigged choice voting. And yet we know that it's so clear we have more to do. Like, all resident voting. Burlington is a proud, early doctor of that in the state of Vermont. Yes, thank you, Vermont. And we will continue to protect that, especially in these times. I also just wanna say a few words on like what we are doing as progressives because we are in a governing mode here in Burlington. We are leading the mayor's office. We're leading from the city council level. And we're proving that progressives can govern and govern well at that, a city. Already in 20 months of being mayor, which feels like 20 years, but 20 months of being the mayor of Burlington right now, we've improved... This is in the leaves. Well, we've improved our Moody's rating. That matters when you actually are committed to affordability. We haven't done that in five years, improving the Moody's rating. Now, if you're like, what in the world and why is she leading on that? When you talk about affordability and you talk about like long-term planning for the city, the Moody's rating, it gives us the bond interest rates that we have to go out for. And so I'm sure many of you supported these big infrastructure bonds we asked you to support at last town meeting day. When we go out to bond for the debt we need to improve our wastewater treatment plant, to improve our water treatment plant, to do the capital upgrades we need for city infrastructure. This hard work we've been doing through governing and fiscal responsibility and working really hard on our budget was noted by Moody's. And they will make those interest rates cheaper, basically, for working people. That matters on your tax bills at the end of the day. We've also been getting to work at fixing and doing budgeting differently. This is a big distinction from the prior administration where we have dug in and gotten very real in our budget. It has been painful and hard. But we're rightsizing this budget and we're making sure we're not living beyond our means. I can't emphasize how important that is, again, for working people. We will price working people out of the city if we do not get a handle on the spending side of things for the city, as well as getting creative on revenues. There's only so much we can ever tax for local residents. And it's time to get really clear about what our core services are. And more to come. We have another hard budget year ahead of us. But we are leading with transparency and the true commitment to knowing that affordability matters for people. And we're doing this differently. We also continue to work with our unions. We have four strong unions who represent our city workers. And we are continuing to work in good faith with them, bargaining their contracts, investing in their workplaces, addressing safety issues that have long been there for our police officers and the staff who work at the police department, to all the way over to folks who work in decrepit facilities like the wastewater treatment plant. Where if you took a tour last winter, because we are trying to be interactive, you would see the kinds of things we ask them to work under. You know, 24/7 shifts where they're working with facilities that have not been invested in for years. And finally, we're also bringing accessibility and access to electeds through city government. So of course, our MPAs are sort of the backbone of public participation. But we've also been committed to making sure that I'm accessible to the community. I do a weekly meetup all over the city. We keep moving and we keep making sure folks have access to engage, ask questions, and be transparent so you know how your city government is working. So while I'm midway through, believe it or not, this term, this three-year term already, we have made some significant progress. And so much, I'm not even gonna list it all. I'll give you some highlights. But as you remember, when I ran, I ran on three big issues, three big priorities for this city. To have an effective and efficient community safety system that actually showed up for you when you needed it and showed up for the most vulnerable, the folks who are suffering the most in our streets. And to cut through the perception and distortion that's out there around who is truly unsafe in our community and who are we prioritizing as a community. We also are pushing ample affordable housing from a people perspective, not from putting more money into a shortlist of people who are privately developers, but truly gotta put a people-first, people-oriented, public asset kind of framework for how we develop more affordable housing in our community. And finally, climate. Continuing to push ourselves, even in these times when the federal government is backed away, a lot of resources being ripped away, we are still committed to being climate champions and making sure we're doing our part. So a couple of highlights. Even in 20 months, what we've been able to do on our health and safety, community safety approach, we are rebuilding a police department that works for Burlington. And we have stabilized the leadership of Burlington Police Department, which is no small feat and was a major change needed in this state, which we led, and I'm sure happened. We're finally implementing and truly investing in true alternative response in terms of community safety response. And there's such champions in this room. Former city councillor Zoraya Hightower, councillor Emile O'Grady on these issues for years. We're finishing the job, not finishing the job, but actually finally getting to work on true alternatives that we will invest that are not police officers, but are actual true investments in mental health crisis response, that are alternatives to police officers responding and making sure that our community partners are supported as such. We're also making sure we're looking at the other side of our health response through our fire department, continuing our community response team, which is the field outreach, if you will, that do checks with folks who are living with substance use. We're investing heavily and we are not backing away from overdose prevention center here, being the pilot city in the state. It's so critical. Again, back to, we will not back down from any empty threats or even real threats from the Trump administration because an OPC will literally save lives and is a critical piece of this puzzle of public health that we need when we know we're living in an opioid crisis. We've also stood up new innovative things on community safety, including a situation table, which you've probably read about. It's been operating since July. It's a way to coordinate and address the top users of our first responder systems. We continually have forty providers show up every single week to address and bring the risk levels down to support these individuals with what they need. Very quick story. One obvious, one really compelling story at the situation table involved a homeless young person living in Spectrum. And their issue, while they were kept on sort of getting reactivated into the criminal justice system, was because they couldn't get their meds because they changed their name and the very messed up medical world would not change their name to actually reflect what their current name is because they are trans and they were changing their name. And so they were unable to get their meds. And so it created this vicious cycle where they were falling through the gaps and then becoming mentally unstable and doing behavioral things that were dangerous in our community. That one example shows by a cross-section and a cross-response between different agencies, it's a critical and real way to bring risk level down and make this city safer for that individual and that individual who might be causing harm to other folks simply because they had a break in their healthcare and a break in the systems recognizing who they are. Onto briefly on housing. I just came from convening an emergency meeting with probably about, I don't know, Jean, how many people were there? Fifty, sixty people or so? Because we are in an extreme emergency with unsheltered population, our neighbors who are trying to live outside, one who's dropping into single digits here in Burlington and in the state. And so we are continuing to push on shelter. We are living in an unprecedented time. There's a community health emergency at this point. And we're trying to leverage new creative thought. And I am really encouraged, I had literally run from that meeting here. People are expanding their thought. And we're trying to make sure the state stays at the table because this is not only for the city of Burlington to solve. And yet we will have a human approach of how to we support these poor individuals because they are our neighbors and they deserve the dignity of creative thought and opening up other physical warm spaces that we can bring forth. Also, within housing, we put those bonds out on a town meeting day ballot. We are boldly saying we need to invest in our infrastructure in order to build out more housing in our community. And that's not just any type of housing. It includes densifying and sort of democratizing how we do housing. So folks who might have space in their backyard to add an ABU can also find a way to be able to plug in and provide this critical, basic need of housing in our community. Was there a signal? Okay, great. Okay, all right, all right. I'm like, I could keep talking forever. As I said, I'm paraphrasing. There's a lot of things on this list. In January, stay tuned because we're gonna be doing a more formal update on our more robust housing strategy. Again, how we're gonna democratize housing and put a people-for-first, public-oriented approach to housing and doing things differently than the city has done before. This largely valued and benefited private developers, people who are making market-based housing. We can do it differently here in Burlington and leverage our public assets and leverage opportunities for people to be helpful in that solution and do it in a way that we can build housing that also uses labor and organized labor to build housing and really thinks about collective space for the benefit of public good. We can put those standards out and have people reach for our standards as a community. And then finally, on climate. I've had about twenty-eight community advisors and city staff working, some of you might even be in the room, to be working on new climate recommendations that are actionable and real and things we can do more of here in the city of Burlington. But we've already been doing work through the support of the Lake Bond. So we can actually eventually, once all the upgrades are done to the wastewater treatment plant, we will stop putting phosphorus in the lake. What a concept. Instead of having things to pitch with a big storm come, we, as Burlington, decided that's a critically important investment. So eventually, once we have fully built out the upgrades to that plant, we, as the city, will stop doing a contribution of phosphorus to our lake, making it healthier for all people. We're also pushing ourselves in other places, like the airport, where we're looking at our carbon footprint and reducing that and things we're adding to the airport. We are looking at all city facilities around our energy use. And we've won awards locally recently for the District 2030 initiative to bring our energy use down in these buildings. That takes a lot of investment into our buildings and to the HVACs and all the things that are, we'll talk about, capital. You're helping us make, be able to do that with the general obligation bond you supported last town meeting day. So I mention all of that because you are helping us be able to put into place, when I'm really considering a renaissance moment, the city of Burlington, where the better and stronger days are coming because we're putting in the hard work right now. And we're making sure that the folks, the working folks who live here today will still be here and be able to afford to be here in two to five years from now. We really start to activate the livability of this town, the vibrancy of this town, which has never gone away. It is dimmed a little bit and we're bringing it back up to really realive in the city of Burlington. And finally, we're doing that with not also backing away from our deep commitment to making sure we have an inclusive and equitable city. I've been a mayor who's leaned in to make sure our racial equity inclusion and belonging office is being chartered now. We're going through that process because we're committed. We are not backing away from that. We make sure it has stable funding from ongoing regular funds in the city, not one-time ARPA funds. And we're working to go beyond that, to diversify our workforce as a city. I've been proud, as the mayor, to drag chairs up to the table to give more people space to be part of these deliberative conversations as a city. And then in important roles, I've been making sure I, as much as I can, appointing women and women of color in particular into leadership roles in our city. Because representation matters. And as the first woman and the first outpouring person to hold the role of mayor in a city's history, I have come here to play. I came here to make sure I made more room and that we are truly become a diverse, a city that reflects the full diversity of our beautiful city. So with that, there you go.
Sounds like Emma has a lot of free time. Thank you, Emma. I really appreciate that. All right, next up, we have State Representative Brian Sheena.
Thank you. It's so nice to be able to get up and speak after the first progressive mayor for us to have while I've been in office, especially one who I've worked with and known so long. So it's really nice. It adds a nice energy to the caucus. And a reminder that, over time, our hard work pays off in electoral politics. So I'm gonna try to be hopeful in a time of great despair. We're seeing unprecedented cuts of funding on the federal level every day. Another surprise has dropped upon us of the dire situation that we're heading into in this legislative session. And not only are we seeing federal cuts to spending, but we are seeing changes in federal policy that have rolled us back to before the New Deal and possibly back to before, ironically, the progressive era of the 1880s. So we are looking at an unprecedented rollback in all this progress that people have fought for for the last century. But in the face of that and in all the crises we are facing as a nation and as a planet, I do have great hope because they're going to fail. And when they fail, the people are gonna be looking for answers. And I believe that those solutions exist and we need to lay the foundation now so that when the time comes, we're ready to move forward with them. And so I'm gonna focus today on those things and not on talking about how bad it is because you can hear that on the news. So you're gonna hear a lot about education reform. I'm not gonna talk about that today because you're gonna hear plenty. And honestly, it's all falling apart. So we need to stand with our teachers and our students and stand up for our education system in the face of these attacks. And they're gonna lose. I am concerned about our healthcare system. I've been concerned the entire time I've worked as a healthcare worker. And we are going to have to realign the way that we do things. We're gonna have to reconsider how we finance things. But in the face of the collapse of what exists, I do see a possibility of taking steps towards universal healthcare. Because we are gonna have to find out how to provide healthcare independent from insurance companies or in new ways. And if the federal government isn't gonna provide us Medicaid and Medicare money and if people can't afford health insurance, then healthcare providers are gonna have to figure out how do we continue doing what we do? And there's an opportunity for municipalities and the state to step up and work with our healthcare providers. And it may be possible that we could lay the foundation for a better way. So I just wanna put that out there to you. In the topic of healthcare, I was selected this year to be an opioid policy fellow by the National Conference of State Legislatures. And I'm currently working on finalizing my recommendations. But I'm gonna give you a sneak preview. So one area is increasing access to novel treatments. Vermont is already rolling out something called contingency management, which you may have heard of because it's going to be done through our overdose prevention center. It's being done in our courts currently. You pay people to stay clean. And you start out with small rewards that increase over time. And this is an evidence-based practice that works, that if we reward people financially for making a healthier choice, then they become motivated to make more healthier choices. And so this is an approach that is supported by the administration in Vermont, by the governor. So you can expect to see contingency management expand in the next year. And so that's already a win that I think we can acknowledge. Another area of novel treatment is called neurofeedback. Neurofeedback uses technology to show people through an interface what their brain state is and then teaches a person, through training, how to alter their mindset, their brainwaves, to reach the desired mental state. And then, once you train a person to do that with the machine, they can do it without the machine. And this intervention has been shown to change criminogenic behavior, which means if someone has a history of criminal behavior, usually due to trauma and their life experiences, by teaching them impulse control and emotional regulation and how to achieve the desired mental state, it reduces criminal behavior. So this is a promising treatment that I'm hoping Vermont can pilot. And then, last but not least, is psychedelic-assisted treatment. Psychedelic-assisted treatment is evidence-based at this point. There are states that are moving forward with clinical trials. The state of Texas has decided to spend a percentage of its opioid settlement fund to rapidly advance the research and development of a compound called ibogaine. Ibogaine comes from a shrub from Africa called iboga. And this is a miracle medicine. And I can say this because I actually, just a week ago, had the opportunity to given access to it. And in one day of very painful treatment, because it makes you very sick when you take this medicine, it cured my addiction to nicotine. My depression and anxiety appears to be gone. The trauma that I've experienced, including being attacked last week by a woman with a glass bottle, the anger, the irritability is gone. And I feel like 20 years, I felt 20 years ago. And if I continue other forms of therapy with this, there's a good chance that I will get even better. So it really showed me like the power of this plant medicine when used in the right way. And because it resets all of your neurotransmitters, it resets the genes in your neurons. It's the only compound known to humans that does this. And pharmaceutical companies are racing to patent it so they can get rich off of it. But Texas, led by Republicans, believe it or not, and 12 other states are creating a research compact and Vermont needs to join. If Vermont joins this compact by giving a small amount of our opioid settlement fund to that compact, we can be one of the states that rapidly rolls out this treatment. And could you imagine the power of someone who's addicted to opioids, being able to go into a clinic for the weekend and coming out with their brain reset to before their addiction? Like, we need this at this time in history. Speaking of a renaissance for the city of Burlington, another suggestion is pairing with our hub-and-spoke model of treatment, a justice and recovery hub-and-spoke model. So I'm designing a redevelopment for the city of Burlington. Surprise, we didn't talk about this yet. And I will provide drawings. I'm designing a whole city block. It's the block around the Castello courthouse. And it would create a 200-bed facility that would be a detention and reentry dormitory for both men and women. So it would allow us to close the women's facility and bring the men home from out of state so we could reinvest that $41 million every few years into the existing systems we have here. And it would also create 80-something beds of supportive housing, a new public safety fire facility for the city is part of my proposal, 10 storefronts that would be designed around the buildings we tore down in that neighborhood historically. So this is, and then from that hub next to the courthouse, along our transit routes, we would build recovery housing in the communities along the way, along the bus lines, and secure recovery residential facilities so that the women who are, the women who are currently incarcerated and not detained in the facility could be moved into micro-residential facilities, like similar to nursing homes, along the bus lines. So more to come on this concept of a pilot project. And then also, I'm proposing that we turn Vermont to a blue zone. If you don't know what that is, there's a Netflix documentary about it. But there are areas on earth where there's, where through changes in the physical and social environment, or not even through changes, but through historic traits of their physical and social environment, there's record numbers of people living to the age 100 and lower healthcare spending. And then last but not least, I'm recommending that we create universal healthcare as part of my fellowship because what's the point of having all these things if everyone doesn't have access? So that's, I'm going to wrap up there. Although I will leave you with a teaser, that I'm also working on a package of AI legislation, including encoding in Vermont statutes neurological rights because you're going to be hearing soon about headbands. You're not hearing about it yet, but very soon. The kids are going to be asking for these to play video games, but there's no protection for their mental privacy. So companies are going to be recording our children's memories, thoughts and feelings, selling them to other companies and then trying to use the video games to control our children's spending behavior. And so this is a very big issue that no one's talking about yet, but you're going to hear about it soon because it is very real, especially with President Trump's efforts to deregulate AI after President Biden protected us with an executive order. So more to come on the AI front. So in the face of great darkness, I just want to encourage people to stay focused on the light and on the goodness in humanity because it's still out there and in the end, it will prevail. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Brian, I adore you, but you said last but not least like three times. So in the interest of time, and thank you for sharing your experience, by the way. That was really good. In the interest of time, we're going to reorder a few things. And so we're actually going to start the nomination process now. So I'm going to hand it over to Adam to take over that portion.
All right, thank you. I have the unenviable position of following our mayor and state representative. So the way that this is going to work tonight, we're going to go through all of the boards, 1, 2, 3, 4, et cetera, and I'm going to call for nominations. The nominators of all of the candidates are going to have a max two minutes to nominate their candidates and then I'm going to invite them to sit up on these chairs. After that, we're going to have time for all of the candidates to give their candidate speeches. Please keep that to five minutes at most. And then we're going to have a Q and A so that anybody in the audience can ask a question and hear from their candidates. So to start us off, the first ward, Ward 1 is not only the first ward in the city, but I think that, you know, it does represent a snapshot of the city from the old industrial quarter by the waterfront or the river and includes the University of Vermont and the areas around this. Renters, homeowners, students, everybody in the city, all the struggles in the city. And so I'm going to give a call for nominations. Would anybody like to nominate a candidate for Ward 1 City Council? Yes?
Thank you, Adam. You go toe-to-toe with anybody in this room. I'm Gil Livingston. I live up the hill, up North Street. And I'm proud to speak on behalf of our friend Carter Newbezer. Carter, with his wife Sophia and Winnie and Wally, who I think are all here, live in Ward 1 and they face, like the rest of us, the challenges around access to healthcare, community safety challenges and affordability. And Carter brings that experience to his work as a city councillor. He's, as you know, a relentless organizer, very curious, loves to knock doors, doesn't care if he's got an opponent or not, he will be at your door. And he's a very good listener. He digests information in service to his work and he starts with people who live in his ward. Carter is a progressive, a diehard progressive, but I'd also characterize him as nonpartisan. I do end up at most city council meetings. He is clear where he disagrees, but he also, on issues that are important to him, reaches to talk to anybody, Democrats included, to forge alliances to get work done on our behalf. And at the risk of vitriolic air, Mayor, Carter and Emma do not always agree, but they always get along. They have an excellent working relationship. There's a tremendous amount of trust and faith between our extraordinary mayor and Carter Newbezer. Finally, Carter works very hard on the issues that are important to us in Ward 1, starting with UVM paying their fair share and housing war students on campus. He focuses on housing affordability. He's been a primary proponent of doubling the contribution annually to the Housing Trust Fund. He's very focused on keeping money out of politics and requiring other officials to financially disclose what their income sources are so the concepts are more apparent. He's very committed to rent stabilization and to just cause eviction. And finally, he's been a strong component of property tax relief, with which, I'll tell you, I trust Carter and you can trust him too, which is why I'm proud to nominate Carter Newbezer to be the Progressive Party's candidate for Ward 1 City Councillor.
Thank you very much. So after 1 comes 2. Ward 2 is really part of the bedrock of the Progressive Party and progressivism in the city, going back all the way to when Terry Barishus was elected to the council back in the 80s. So I'm going to open it up to somebody to nominate for the Ward 2 City Council.
Jean Bergman was there in the 80s too, with Brian. I'm Wendy Cow. It's weird to have your partner do the introduction for you, but, and probably 99% of the people here know who he is anyway. So he really doesn't need much of an introduction because when he gives his little speech, then you'll get to know him. I mean, we've been living in Ward 2 for over 40 years.
Is there anybody else that would like to nominate somebody for the Ward 2 City Council? Hearing none, let's move to Ward 3. Ward 3 is also part of the bedrock of Burlington's progressive movement. It's actually the longest-held ward in the city for the Progressive Party. And so I'm going to open up nominations. Is there anybody that would like to nominate? Let's go to Emma.
Thank you. As a former Ward 3 City Councillor in my former life, I am happily here to nominate Laura Sanchez Parkinson, who is a neighbor of mine on Front Street. She's a system thinker, a professional working in the field of social impact to make workplaces more inclusive and to help advance the leadership of women of color. She's also a mother and immigrant and I am so lucky to have her also be part of the sustainability, along with her family and her kiddos, Sustainability Academy community. Before I speak on her readiness to serve Ward 3 in Burlington, I'm going to pause and tell you about why specifically it's important for us to support women of color and immigrants in these political times. On April 1st, 2024, I became the first woman and first openly queer person to hold the role of mayor in the city's history. That very first morning at City Hall, my staff checked the voicemail and carefully informed me that there was a violent gender-based threat in one of the messages on day one in the city of Burlington. It stopped me in my tracks and I immediately thought, where are my children? Where is my wife? Are they safe and can I leave this building? I still face gendered and homophobic hostility nearly two years into this job and I share this because I know that my mere existence as a queer woman is an act of resistance to the political extremism surrounding all of us right now. I also know that it's even more important to lift up capable women of color leaders who are willing to serve their communities, especially immigrant women. There is a dangerous fixation by those advancing an authoritarian xenophobic state on immigrants, especially people from Latin America, but also Afghanistan, Somalia and many other places. We cannot minimize this as immigrants from those parts of the world are Burlingtonians. Burlington can be a much-needed alternative to these dangerous national trends and we do that tonight by consciously supporting and nominating a very skilled leader, Laura. Laura's Latina, an immigrant of working class roots, a mom and hopefully our next Ward 3 City Councillor. I'm briefly going to tell you about her readiness to serve Burlington. Her education degrees are in organizational management and she has made a career out of breaking down barriers for women running for elected office and diversifying workforces. Locally, she has dug deeply into our school community, assisting with community building events to teach a planning and diversifying our educator workforce. Beyond this very quick bio, let me explain what really matters at the end of the day. Laura thinks that her community, Laura thinks about her community and the well-being of neighbors and how inclusive communities underpin every single thing. I see it. Her immigrant working class roots informs her understanding that inequities and the lack of basic needs underpin so many of the everyday challenges facing folks here at Burlington. So please join me in supporting Laura to be our next Ward 3 City Councillor.
Is there anybody else that would like to nominate a candidate for the Ward 3 City Council seat? Yes?
I would like to nominate Vihas. I've known him for several years since we were founding board members of the Vermont Real Estate Cooperative together. And in that role, I found him collaborative, friendly, always listening and paying attention and almost disarming, which I think could be a skill that would be useful on the council. Vihas has been in Burlington for more than 10 years and has been engaged in all kinds of things, like longer less than I could, so I'll leave that to him. But he's been involved, working and volunteering, in a lot of progressive efforts, including employee ownership, cooperatives and the NPA, which we know has had its issues and has been here. Vihas for the Ward 3.
So nobody from the next four wards submitted their application or the form to register as a candidate. However, I am going to open the floor for all of the wards. I know that there are people in this room from the next ward. Is there anybody who would like to run for the City Council for Ward 4 or would like to nominate a candidate for Ward 4? Hearing none. Is there anybody that would like to nominate somebody running for Ward 5? Hearing none. Is there any person here that would like to nominate a candidate running for Ward 6? Hearing none. Is there anybody here that would like to nominate a candidate running for Ward 7? Hearing none. I will move on to a ward that we do have a candidate running in. Now, Ward 8 is my ward. It's my favorite ward. And I'm going to pass it on to anybody who would like to nominate a candidate running for the Ward 8 City Council seat.
Thank you. I'm here to nominate for progressive nomination for Merrick Broder for City Council, Ward 8. I am a former city councillor for this ward and I feel very honored to be able to do this because that's a difficult ward in the way that it is very transient. We have a lot of people who come in and live for a little while and then leave. But we also have a lot of city councillors, myself included, that served a term but did not run for reelection. And I felt that that did my constituents a disservice. I knew that it was the right decision at the time for myself, but it is something that I don't wish on the constituents of Ward 8. And I really am so proud that Merrick is even willing to run again. It's a very hard job and it doesn't matter if you have a law degree or a background in council stuff or whatever. If you've done it or if you've never done it before and that's your first term, like everyone knows that it is a challenge, it's a lifestyle change and it is a huge sacrifice. And Merrick has done that beautifully this last term. I am so grateful for him. I'm also grateful that he cares about sustainability and, you know, making this city more pedestrian-friendly and friendly to cyclists. And I care about the fact that he cares about our NPA and empowering our communities and having people engage with students on a more serious level and also safe housing. What a concept. These aren't radical ideas, by the way, but I give you all the credit in the world for being persistent because there, and I do continue to believe this, I believe that there are good players in all institutions and there are people that really, really value and benefit from hearing again and again and again what is needed by the people. And Merrick does that. Merrick does that very effectively and I'm so proud of him. He does, he really does represent the ward and I am really, really grateful that he's running again. And man, human to human, I'm just proud of you. Yeah.
All right, thank you. And thank you to everybody that's nominated candidate. However, we're going to open the floor once again to anybody that would like to nominate a candidate for any wards, but especially a ward that does not currently have a candidate. All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask all of our candidates to come up to the stage. I believe we have six candidates and, wow, we have six chairs. And we have five candidates. There's an open chair. Here. All right, so I'll sit down shortly, but this is an opportunity for our candidates to give a speech explaining why they are the right candidate for their ward rather than running for reelection. I'm just going to run it down the table. So we have our two Ward 3 candidates and then our city councillor is running for reelection. So I'm going to pass it, I guess, first to Vihas. So here you go.
Thanks, Adam. I didn't realize I was going to go first today. Yeah, I see a lot of familiar faces in the room. Hi, folks. Spent a lot of time here at the various NPAs. Yeah, I was pleasantly surprised to admit that we have multiple candidates coming from Ward 3, truly. It shows that it's a progressive stronghold in the city and it really has been and I hope it continues to be. and it really has been, and I hope it continues to be. And I was sort of thinking a lot about a lot of different things. You know, Ireland arguably has some of the sanest national politics out of any country in the English-speaking world. Some of that is cultural, for sure, but I would argue that a lot of it is structural. They've used a single-transferable vote system to elect their Doyle Aaron, their Lord of House of Parliament, for over 100 years. For a long time, I used to tell folks that I moved to Burlington in 2013 for instant runoff voting, and I moved to Vermont for single payer healthcare. You all know how that went. I'm glad at least one of those things is back, and truly, I love instant runoff voting as a system of electing people. From the outside, there's this perception that Burlington is some sort of socialist paradise. Much of the credit for that perception goes to people in this room and people that you guys know and the long hard work with the Progressive Party. But, you know, just a quick show of hands, how many of you guys were born in Burlington? How many people have always lived here and never lived anywhere else? See, it's no one. I bet politics is at least on the list of reasons why all you guys chose to make your home here. I know it was for me. And we're lucky to live in a place where nearly everybody supports progressive social and economic policy. Even the worst politicians here are okay by most outside standards. I'm not looking at any politicians when I say that, I swear. Yet, you know, the bitter personal animosity between Democrats and progressives continues to hold City Council back from being the capable, proactive legislative body that I think it can be. I'm here because I know I can do the job of City Councilor competently and consistently. I'm not aiming for fireworks. I'm not aiming to be the best person ever. I'm aiming for competent and consistent. In our world, there are windows of opportunity for broad-based economic and social democracy in this world. It's first and foremost our responsibility to recognize when those windows are open and to take full advantage of them, to work hard to make sure that we're pushing the policies that we know we can all benefit from. In times when those windows are closed or closing, it's our responsibility to build with coalition, to take advantage of that next window, and to test the mixture of policies and techniques that we can use to keep moving our society forward and that are most right for the next window of opportunity. If we're diligent and lucky, we can sometimes create those windows of opportunity by doing the work of building solidarity. I truly believe that. I do community-building work. I do it for work. I do it for fun. I do it for frustration, for all of it. It's what I do. I'm going to keep doing that work regardless of who gets the party endorsement today. And I truly believe that we're lucky to have two good candidates. Please say hi if you see me around town. I'll be here.
Thank you, Vihas. First off, I just want to say thank you to our mayor for the work that you do for the city and for your endorsement. Thank you to my partner, Patrick, and my two kiddos that are here on the school night, Natalia and Thea Kowis. Thank you to all of you for coming out on this cold, snowy night to join us and to Adam and Jane for making sure that this event runs smoothly. I'm also really grateful for our caucus voting process so that everyone in our neighborhood, regardless of whether they could make it out tonight or not, can be part of an equitable process and then be part of our democratic system by voting online. So thank you for saying that. About 25 years ago, my family and I migrated to the United States. With hopes of a better future, I witnessed my parents work long hours, low-paying jobs to provide for our family. By the age of 14, I started my first job in a restaurant service industry. And as many new Americans, I worked hard, I studied hard, but I quickly realized that they were ingrained in inequalities in our society. The reality is that many will continue to work long hours and still never own a home, that talented young people will be ready to go to college whenever afford it, and that hard-working people who are paying taxes continue to experience bias and discrimination in our social services. Early on, as a college student, it was through organizing and activism that I saw firsthand what a collective group of people can do to achieve when they're coming together. At a time when different groups wanted different issues amplified, we found power in organizing and strategizing. One day, we advocated for the humanity of undocumented people. The next day, we pressured our leaders to divest from corporations. And the next day, we walked the city to protest co-exitality. It was through this multicultural and collaborative approach of organizing that we were able to lead to small wins or big wins, like securing in-state tuition for undocumented students. Today, at the core of my work is building collectives so that we can address complex social issues. I seek the nomination from the Progressive Party because I believe that we can work together to create a better future for ourselves and for our next generation. When my partner and I decided to move to Burlington, it was an intentional decision. We knew that we wanted to move to a place where we could raise healthy Black and Brown children. Some may have questioned our decision. Why move to one of the whitest states in the country? But Burlington is special, and our community is special. We quickly found community places like the Center City Little League, an organization that was founded by former Burlington Mayor Bernie Sanders to create economically opportunities for young players in our neighborhood. Now, as a board member myself, we continue this legacy and welcome our young players, regardless of their gender identity, their racial identity, or economic status. I believe that how we invest in our young people determines the future of our community. As the Director of Programs for the C Fund, a nonprofit dedicating to supporting the mental health of young people of color, I manage suicide prevention interventions and educational programs. If nominated and elected to City Council, I look forward to bringing my professional expertise to inform policy that centers the needs and the future of our community. As community leaders, it is our responsibility to ensure that our young people can see bold and courageous leaders. They deserve, thank you. They deserve to see leaders that look like them so that one day, they too can organize and create change. Through my work in the Burlington School District and the University of Vermont, I'm exploring how we can build resilient young leaders and to ensure that we develop a pathway to education, training, and workforce opportunities. As a multi-generational ward, Ward Three is home to longtime homeowners, to young people who have aspirations and are attending college, to professionals, some with families, who are deciding whether Burlington is affordable for them, and to immigrants who are navigating this increasingly challenging environment. If nominated and elected for City Council, I look forward to representing a diverse community. As a City Councilor, I look forward to building on the work to ensure that our neighbors can afford and live in our city so that we can continue to reimagine our community's safety infrastructures and promote a healthy future. I will draw from my national and international lens to inform or localize the work and to navigate our current politicized environment by centering the needs of all of our residents. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. And good job, both of you. Way better than my speech two years ago. Don't look it up. Please don't look it up. Please don't look it up. All right. Thank you, Jane, for nominating me. It's truly an honor to get the nomination from a past Ward Eight City Councilor. And I'm hoping that I have carried on your legacy and hope to continue doing that if reelected. So my name's Merrick Broder. If you don't know me, I am your Ward Eight City Councilor. I have lived in Burlington for over four years and have been an organizer with the Democratic Socialists of America for just as long, both on the UVM campus and in the greater Burlington and Vermont community. I'm very excited to be here once again to seek the nomination from the Progressive Party. Being on City Council for me is about two things. One, what can I do with the power and influence I do have to improve people's lives more so than when I came in? And two, how can I use my voice and my platform to raise consciousness to the true causes of our current conditions? That being capitalism. The power being consolidated not with us, the people, but with those who exploit us for profit. I believe I have done my very best to live up to these two purposes. In terms of policy, I have been the lead sponsor on continuing our efforts to regulate greenhouse gas emissions in large buildings, which we are currently collecting data on to pursue those standards. And I was also the lead sponsor of the recent dormitory housing resolution, where through months of organizing and working with students on campus, we took on the largest institutions in our city and convinced the City Council to find solutions to the terrible state of much of our student housing here in Burlington unanimously. That in particular, I am most proud of because we showed that when we are organized out here, we can win in there, despite the overwhelming forces and power that we are up against. When we organize, we win. In addition, I use my platform to boost the voices of our movement, whether that be treating all of our neighbors with humanity, housed or unhoused, documented or undocumented, and ending the genocide in Palestine, so much more. I will never shirk my role as a member of our movement, both in City Hall and in the streets with you. So what's next? The many crises here in Burlington beyond continue, and I remain committed to addressing them. On housing, we need to continue to densify Burlington with more areas of high-density index-use development. I want to accomplish this through upzoning existing residential areas and rezoning others, such as the golf course and our many open-air parking lots. Of course, we need that housing to be affordable and stay so. Therefore, I also want more money to go into our Housing Trust Fund. We can do that as a city now, but to really see this crisis through in a way that we need it, it will require us to continue out of the fight on a local and state level for taxing wealth and taxing the rich. Lastly, on housing, the biggest concern I have heard from constituents so far in this cycle, we've been canvassing for two months. We've already knocked every door. Pretty exciting. Thank you, my volunteers. The biggest concern that I have heard from constituents so far, and also two years ago, has been rent. We need rent stabilization, and I am willing to work with anyone on the local level and the state level to see this come for a vote, either in Burlington or in Montpelier. It's simply a necessity at this point. I am also committed to protecting and expanding our public services, which includes a consolidated solid waste collection system that is run by the city, but also includes standing up our OPC, increasing funding to departments like Public Works and permitting and inspections to be able to execute our vision for the city and support our residents. And lastly, I am exploring creating programs that are run by the city. Some we can do immediately, some may take charter changes, that can assist tenants in taking power from landlords and putting it into their hands, our hands. Those are just two of my priorities. So I hope that you check out my website, merrickptv.com, to see the fully updated platform. And if you're interested in joining and volunteering, again, please check out the website. It is an honor to serve, Ward Eight, and serve Burlington. And onward to march. The movement continues. Nice speaker. And that was significantly longer. Better. Don't start to look very crazy, though. From the last time. I mean, if you saw him at the nomination speech and then you've seen him over the year, you know that another world is possible. And thank you, guys, for stepping up. And Adam and Jane for playing this. And thank you, my love Wendy. You're my compagia, my partner in family and life, my savior, and I love you. And thank you all for being here now and being with me throughout the years because this struggle would be very lonely without you. To say that these are difficult as well as interesting times is a gross understatement. We know the serious challenges affording housing, food, medical care, and other necessities. We know the serious health and safety issues facing our community and the cost of drought and floods caused by climate change. We are also experiencing existential threat to the meager social democracy we call the New Deal, the Great Society, and the civil rights movement-inspired Second Reconstruction. Great programs and policies that are being destroyed in a spasm of hate and greed by fascists in Washington and the MAGA states, and indeed, they are threatening democracy itself. Standing up to fascists, corporate politicians, neoliberals, and all their minions, including Democrats, is not easy. But here we are, over 40 years with Bernie in the lead since we took City Hall. And my friends, if we did not have a Progressive Party, we'd have to build it. But we do have that party. I am not alone. You are not alone. We do this work together. We have a progressive mayor. We have counselors and candidates willing to challenge the system and push for transformational change inside city government. And we are part of movements doing the same outside of government. Labor historian David Montgomery reminds us of our mandate that our mandate as a political party is threefold. One, to build mass coalitions. Two, to recruit and cultivate leaders who are materially connected to our base. And three, to promote and pass policy agendas to serve the base, the working class, progressive people across the class divide, and people who are and have been discriminated against, exploited, repressed, and oppressed. Our task, therefore, is to educate, to agitate, to organize, and to win elections and exercise whatever power we have and we can with solidarity, with organization, and equality at its heart. Knowing full well that the oligarchs will engage in a sometimes ruthless class war to keep their power and the means of wealth extraction, knowing that the system itself is organized to frustrate us. And we see that here. We see that in New York City. We see that all over the place, and it has a long history. Nochansky says that the smartest way to keep people passive and obedient is to strictly limit the spectrum of acceptable opinion that allows very lively debate within that spectrum. But we know this, we have, and will continue to reject this limit. We will continue to push open the window of acceptable discourse. This Overton window. And let me give you four recent examples. We led a fight on the Council to defend free speech and democracy, calling out the attacks on the Palestinian solidarity movement, which were the leading edge of the assault on free speech. We opposed genocide and supported the people's right to vote, to voice the opposition to apartheid, to settler colonialism and military occupation at the ballot box. We stood and spoke out in the streets with our sisters and brothers to defend and support Khalil and Mohsin and Rumeza and all of our brothers and sisters in migrant justice. We've led the fight for affordability. Yikes. You've heard a lot of stuff. So I'm going to pass on the affordability and the climate change and just say that there are a couple of things. We beat back Democrats in this city's attempt to decrease displacement by killing the condo conversion ordinance. And we stood firm against their attempt to weaken the light that we're shining on UVM housing conditions. And God, I hear echoes of Margaret Thatcher and Ronald Reagan every time, and we hear it all the time from them, just saying no. Every time they push up, there is no alternative to neoliberal supply-side trickle-down economics. It is a failure, and it is important that we are here. Let me, I'm sorry, I'm out of time, but I gotta do this, please. Let me leave with just this last little bit. The system is not going to change on its own. Burlington Democrats are not going to change it, but it is essential if we're going to keep the planet habitable for our babies and most other life. It's essential if we're going to bring justice to the world. And that's why I end, and I've repeated this here before, that I end with the words of the poet Aurora Levins. repeated this here before, that I end with the words of the poet Aurora Levins Morales, who says, "Say these words when you lie down and when you rise up, when you go out and when you return, in times of mourning and in times of joy. Teach them to your children, your neighbors, your enemies. Recite them in your sleep here in the cruel shadow of empire. Another world is possible." Imagine winning. This is your, this is our sacred task, it's our power. Imagine every detail of winning. Imagine war is a scarcely credible rumor, that the crimes of our age, the grotesque humanities of greed, the sheer and astounding shamelessness of it, the vast fortunes made by stealing lives, the horrible normalcy it came to have is unimaginable to our heirs, the generations of the free. So don't waver, don't despair. Escalate your dreams and make them burn so fiercely that you can follow them down any dark alleyway of history and not lose your way. Make them burn clear as a starry drinking gourd over the grim fog of exhaustion and keep walking, hold hands, share water, and keep imagining so that we and the children of our children's children may live. Please help me if you make it so. Si se puede, ver seremos adelante.
I was gonna say, I don't know if folks heard, but I said, "How am I supposed to follow that?", and he said, "You can't, you can't." So I'll attend to here.
Do you have caucuses to do?
Yes, we can, yes we can. Talking about, speaking of neoliberalism. Well, thank you all so much, and you've heard a bunch here, and I don't wanna hold us all too long. I wanted to thank both Ward Three candidates for running, I appreciate folks stepping up, and it is, I was just sitting here reflecting as everybody was speaking, I got involved in 2017 as a very ideological and optimistic college student, who was just...
Louder or an optimistic?
I'll be a little louder, I'll be a little louder. Got involved in 2017 in the party as a really ideological and optimistic student organizer, and was just, it's so good to see that we have two incredibly competent candidates who are both parents of young kids, which would be nice to have in the caucus, and two folks who are gonna do the job really well and clearly add quite a bit to our caucus. So I'm really appreciative of that, and it is, you couldn't say that at every point in our party's history. So we are building real power, and it's paying off. I wanna talk a little bit about some of the wins that I think we've gotten around affordability, because I've spent the last three weeks now deciding whether or not to run for reelection, and I called through a bunch of folks who had done so much to get me elected, who were so supportive the first time around, and just trying to get feedback and reflect, have conversations with them. And the biggest reflection that I've sort of come to on whether or not I should run again is, can I make life more affordable for working and middle-class folks? Can I lower the monthly bills somehow by having the title of city counselor? And I think we can, I think we can, and I think we already have done some of that work, and I've been really honored to do that work alongside our mayor. I just wanna, these don't always make the seven days like Democrats versus progressives are going after each other, but I wanna note a couple of things here. I introduced tonight, led on a resolution that, starting next year, is gonna increase the amount of money going into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund by $180,000 every year. And that is not where we need to be, but that is tangible, tangible progress, and it's gonna make a difference in working in middle-class folks' lives. The mayor has led with this tax fairness working group, and we are now seeing proposals run through about how we are gonna make a tax system more fair, knowing that some of those fights over the state and some of that work, we can do immediately here at the city level. We are talking about protecting public assets in our city and making sure that we can have, hopefully, public recycling, public waste collection, compost and trash moving into the future. We've talked about increasing tenant protection, which my colleague Merrick has led on, and standing up to large institutions and protecting tenants. Very early on, which didn't get a lot of coverage, but we actually expanded affordability programs, both the BED and the Water Department, to make things cheaper for more and more residents. And instead of making working-class people go fill out a bunch of forms, both of our public-owned utilities are, we don't have income data from the state, so we don't know who would automatically qualify, but they're going to partner organizations all over our region and automatically opting folks in, so that we don't have to throw working people into this just pit of bureaucracy, but we are just going and doing the work of lowering their bills automatically. And that doesn't make the WCAX headlines, but it is critically, critically important. And I just wanna say too, in 2024, we built the record number of new houses, and we're seeing 279 new units came online in 2024. In 2026, we're gonna see 400, estimated 465 new units of housing come online. So I got one minute left, and this is all leading to, I've decided and I've worked with a number of folks on developing an agenda centered on affordability, and really trying to think of what are the immediate levers we can pull now to lower costs for all of us and our monthly bills. So a few things, you're gonna see, you've all been bugged already to sign onto the affordability agenda, but there's seven proposals that I'm gonna work hard to build support for, not only in Ward One, but in the South End, in the New North End, in the Old North End, so that we can show up after this election and have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of Burlingtonians sign down to these proposals. So I wanna double the money, as has been mentioned before, to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, because if we wanna build more affordable housing, we need to pay to build more affordable housing. We need to lower the cost of rent. Between 2018 and 2024, the last six years of democratic control in this city, rent for a one-bedroom increased by 34%. Rent for a two-bedroom has gone up 28%. And so that's well over inflation. We need to increase the amount of money that the wealthy in the city pay, and we need to get creative on how to do that, because the state is not gonna give us the authority tomorrow. Governor Phil Scott is not gonna have an epiphany that we need to tax the wealthy. So we need to investigate ways, and I think there are a number of ways with zoning that we can increase taxes on places like the Burlington Country Club. I think we need to lower the cost of municipal waste collection, and I think we can do that by pursuing a consolidated publicly-owned model, so that we have one truck going down the road, not fifteen going down neighborhoods and collecting folks' trash, compost, all that good stuff. And then the last three-year, "City Incentives For All" is my little bumper sticker here thing, you can go on the website and read more, but it is so hard to navigate, I feel like I'm a competent professional human being, I'm a city council for God's sakes, it is so hard to navigate the mounds and mounds and mounds of paperwork for, I need sort of help financially from the government at any level, whether you're talking about health insurance and making sure you sign up for the right plan, figure out what you can cover so you don't walk in and get hit with a $100 bill as I did my first year out of college. So we need to get city staff on doors. We have a list of really, really good incentive programs for residents for doing the right thing, for electrifying, for putting in a rain garden. We need to get city staff to folks' front doors so that we can sign them up for those things and put money into their pocket, because a lot of times, folks are already doing these things, they don't know that these incentives exist. And then finally, we need to tax the wealthy, and the very last one this year, we need to better enforce code, and not just on campus at UVM, but we need to expand the capacity of code enforcement and protect tenants all over the city, because we've got work to do there as well. So I hope that you, I appreciate you indulging all of us, indulging me, I hope that you'll sign to endorse this agenda, so that we can show up with some momentum on day one, I hope that you'll get involved in the campaign, and I'll bug you on the way out. So take a flyer, everybody in this room, sign, and so appreciate your time, thanks all. All right, I'm gonna open it up to questions from the audience. You know, we only have the space until eight o'clock, so, you know, trying to make a brief, so probably have two candidates that most take a question, maybe prioritize people from Ward Three, but is anybody would like to ask a question to these candidates? Yes. I'll, I'm gonna, is that one working?
I'll address this to the Ward Three candidates. A few of you had mentioned need for our city to do its part to address the existential threat of climate change. Our city now gets 30 or 40% of its electricity from the McNeil Generating Station, which burns wood to generate electricity. And the science is clear that burning wood to generate electricity generates more greenhouse gas emissions per unit of energy produced than burning any fossil fuel. My question is, will you commit to moving Burlington away from reliance on the McNeil plants and towards finding replacement power that is cleaner and more affordable?
Hello? Ah, there we go. Yeah, we talked a little bit about this before, I think it's important when you're pushing anyone policy, something as big as changing, you know, 30 to 40% of the power generating in our city, I think it's important to have a clear transition plan. And I think it makes a lot of sense as a counselor to push the EED to decarbonize and to make sure that they're doing that responsibly, and I think it's important as a counselor to weigh all the options that we're transitioning to. I think there's also a lot of possibility in things like district heat and things like, things that can take the pressure off of electricity generation potentially, because that's another huge usage of energy in our city in a cold climate. I'm not an expert on electricity, I'm happy to learn more about it, I'm happy to trust the judgment of the folks that we have working on this, but I think it's just important to have a transition plan off of carbon-based electricity generation in general.
Thanks for your question. One of the things that I'm really excited about as city councilor is being able to have an overview of all the issues that are happening in our city, and I think that climate is one of those that, you know, luckily, our current administration is taking up, and being able to really see how, what is already happening in terms of what strategy do we currently have, and then how can we continue to integrate new ideas, how can we continue to assess what works, and then be able to become part of this larger plan so that we can effectively move forward. So I would be also excited to continue learning more, specifically about that plan, and thinking about how to integrate it into a broader climate strategy.
Do either, any of you wanna take a, no? Okay. All right, do you have any other questions? We've got, yeah, right here.
Hi, my name is Philip Fernand, unresident of Ward Three and a community organizer, and I'm wondering in particular, the overdose prevention center location is a hotly contested topic in the city, which is really important, but also is really important is how we consider where this is going to be and how we handle that question. So just wondering, what is most important to you folks when considering site location for the overdose prevention center?
Definitely a hot topic, so I'm looking for asking that. I believe that one of the, you know, one of the important things, specifically being in Ward Three, we're in such a centralized place where we are an accessible place for this potential center to be located. I think that what, as we continue to move forward in this project, what is really important is to be able to think about mapping out where our social service across the city, where does it make more sense to have this center in a way that we can have the greatest impact, because we know that those who are gonna be participating and engaging with the center, we also want them to be able to access social services. And so making sure that we're able to think about the holistic approach to supporting individuals, and I think also most importantly, making it accessible, making sure that those who need it the most are able to access it via public transportation or walking distance and being able to engage it. I'll just say, like, from a personal, I think being in Ward Three, there's a possibility that the center may be in our ward or close to our ward, and so I think, I think quite a bit about how that's gonna impact our community. I have two children who I walk to school, and I know the impact of just being able to have those spaces. I also think I'm excited for the opportunity for this to be a learning opportunity for our community, for our young people. I wanna be able to think about the ways that we can see this as an opportunity, that we're learning from it, and that we're able to also teach our young children and our young people, like, this is an intervention, this is how we address holistically and how to support, so not being afraid to, for the center to be in our community, and how it can be both accessible and also, you know, we can engage the community in learning more about it.
Yeah, totally. Accessibility, equity, and support, I think, are all key things to think about. Also, just a little shout out, I took the mayor's survey for talking about the citing of the overdose prevention center, I would encourage all of you to do that and spread it around as well, that's really important information. I think this is long overdue in our city, and I'm all for placing it where we have that accessibility, equity, and support.
My name is Sal Melachem, and I am really worried, I am really scared for the people who are sleeping out, and, you know, waking up in the morning and you're seeing those three degrees, or, you know, how are, how are we helping these people stay alive? I know we don't have that many shelters, and I know we're trying to do whatever we can, but how are we gonna keep these people alive? I'm so scared for our innocent people.
Now, this has been one of the most, not to get all blue and doom, but incredibly serious topic, and it's been one of the most viscerally depressing and sort of heart-wrenching realities, is that I'm a sitting city councilor and there's people freezing to death outside as we're having this event in a civilized world, and it's, it's a lot. I'll say that in short, the state needs to get this act together. There's a bunch of ways that we could raise money to expand shelter capacity, to expand mental health supports, you know, we're in the middle of a drug epidemic, as we talked about, Russian toward an OPC is a critical part of this equation. Tomorrow, you know, this legislative session, the state could decide to tax folks who make a whole lot of money and invest that money into affordable housing, into shelters, into actually supporting municipalities, instead of saying, "We're just gonna end the motel program, step back and go figure it out." And credit to the mayor as well, who's done work on this and actually improved with the very limited funding that we have, you know, how this sort of, how cold it gets before we open the shelter, right? And it's still not where it needs to be, and it's still gross and inhumane, but this is the reality that we're living through. But we need the state to step up, Fair Share Vermont, if folks are interested, has a great proposal that would put a 3% surcharge on income after $500,000. I don't know, Benny, do you make $500,000? I certainly don't. And that would raise anywhere, depending on who Matthew listens to, $40 to $80 million annually, we could be investing that into things like shelter capacity.
Sal, let me just say, the mayor talked about this earlier, there was a meeting today at like 4:30, that brought providers from all over the county, as well as officials, as well as officials from towns and police and assorted other folks, and state folks there. This is an ongoing issue that is really at the...
This is an ongoing issue that is really at the administrative-executive place, and in terms of councillors, I mean, our job is to make sure that the votes to authorize our mayor are affirmative, that we block things like the attempt to kill the food program in City Hall Park, which it was our caucus that really pushed back on that, and that the funding for these things goes on. The OPC is important, and there are people on the council, I was talking about the, you know, the no-alternative folks, the just-say-no folks, who believe that whenever you provide benefits and services for people, that all you're doing is attracting all these other people, and you've never solved the problem, right? Which is this right-wing backlash that we have been fighting against and that we will continue to fight against. So in terms of what we can do, I think we can continue to support the mayor and make sure that all of the systems that we've got in place have no gaps or few gaps, and the people that have the resources, which is the state right now, not the federal government, you can't look for the feds, are going to be at the table and working on it. So, you know, our job, and what can we do, is to make sure that we are really, really vigilant on this and really strong, because everybody, everybody's life has dignity and worth, you know, us, you use, you know, the worth and dignity of all people, and that is at the foundation of what we need and what we, as progressives, have been doing, and that makes me really proud. Thank you.
I just feel like we could keep speaking.
Absolutely. Absolutely. My second one has already been sent out, just really quickly. I just need, this is a call-out to our state government. Not opening our warming shelters until the temperature reaches negative 10, even zero degrees, is absolutely beyond the pale disgusting. Your question talked about three degrees. That's not enough to even open the shelters for people. Disgusting. Yeah, I just want to make a comment that I think it's really important to note that this is a problem that's downstream from affordable housing, and we need to deal with the crisis right now, but we also need to make sure that we're not dealing with the same crisis in 10 years and 10 years, whatever that is. And the more we can do now to get more affordable housing units, the more it enables social services, the more it enables other things too. So, you know, we need to deal with the crisis, but also think about that long-term.
I think a lot of what has already been said. I think we need to focus on really thinking about the humanity of these individuals. I think what you've said, I have a background in communication, so I think a lot about how do we continue to put the messaging out there so that people, like, these are our neighbors, like, they're right outside, and so how do we continue to grow empathy within our community so that we can better support and provide them?
Right, I unfortunately do not think we have more time for more questions, although you could still definitely talk to your candidates after the caucus. We do have to nominate people tonight for Ward Clerk/Inspector elections. It says School Board, I don't think we do School Board nominations, but, yeah, so thank you so much for participating. You can step off.
Actually, Adam, I want to talk before they step down. These people are standing up for us, and they need our support. They need our volunteer hours, they need our money, they need our monthly donations to the party, and they need us to, like, fully commit. So they're going to work 10 times harder than all of us, but we need you to, like, step up, volunteer, leaflet, phone call, design the website, design the leaflet, help out in every way possible. So I'm asking all of you to support these brave people, like, they're so brave, they need your help. Please sign up to volunteer on their campaigns, please give them money, and please go to the party. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm going to invite up here a last speaker before we do the Ward Clerk/Inspector nominations. We also have Heather Thomas, our Executive Director, there you are, right up there, to make a quick fundraising pitch, or, yeah, something like that. All right, thank you, Heather, our new Executive Director.
Hey, everybody, so nice to be here. I know we're super short in time, so I'm going to save my poetry for another day. But I'm just so, like, thrilled to see all the energy in the room tonight, and I'm going to defer my time to Will.
Yeah, I'm also here to talk fundraising, and thanks, Barbara, thanks for trying for setting up fundraising as well. But I'll be brief. You know, I got involved in this party because I thought that money wasn't involved, you know, because I've seen how money has influenced the Democrat and Republican establishments. But unfortunately, we face a dark irony with this, which is that because our candidates support these positions, and because we don't want to mortgage our future away so that the rich can, you know, not pay their fair share in taxes, we don't attract, with rare exceptions, the large donations, the wealthy donations that the Democrat and Republican parties receive. And the party is at real risk of collapse, financial collapse, in the coming year unless we can turn that around. And we have a fundraising committee which is going strong, and we have a lot of dedicated donors which are keeping us going in the short term, a lot of whom are in this room, and I thank you immensely, I do. But we need more donations, we need folks to be able to step up, and it's not because we are spending too much money. We pay for Heather and her work, and she's been doing a tremendous job. We just had a reorganization led by her, which was probably the best ever. I mean, the party is thriving in places that I never really thought it would, you know, in no small part due to that. And we pay for a data system, which we're hoping will be a real turning point factor for a lot of the candidates that you're seeing up here. Other than that, I'm one of the most frugal Yankees there is, like, we are not wasting money, we are not wasting your money, we need your support, or else frankly, you know, we are going to be in trouble this coming year. So if you would like to donate, please get in touch with me or go to our website, there's multiple ways which you can do so. Again, thank you so much, really appreciate all your support, and hopefully you'll continue to. Tell your friends, tell your family, anyone that could possibly help us keep this project going. Thanks, Evelyn.
Thanks, Will. All right, I know that we have young kids in the room that need to go to bed, and I know that some of you have young kids at home, you guys got to get there. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We'll be sending out a link to your email after this, later tonight, to vote. Voting will be open till 11:59 on Friday this week. If you did not sign up via email to register for this, and if you did not sign anything at the door, please do sign something at the door, put your email down so you get a link to vote. That is why you're here. Thank you again so much, and it's been really nice to see all your faces. Get home safe, stay warm.
Look, look, we need to pick up chairs and clean up, we need to basically restore this space, so, thanks, everybody, for coming out.